Let's take this thing off. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a November first planning board meeting for the town of Farmington. If you have not signed in, please sign in. The first motion's here. Urgency action, uh, one over here, and then the one you came in. You should be in good shape. Please mute, as I do, your cell phones. There we go. Future cell phones and all other electronic devices. Let's see, uh, most of you have been here before, so you know what's going on. If you speak from your chair, let me know ahead of time because I have to turn the speakers on for the room. If I turn those on, it's gonna pick up every single conversation, even whisper conversations, and it's all gonna be documented and recorded for posterity. So be careful. I would just give you that advice. At least that's what I've been told. I haven't actually seen it happen in person. So with that, we have the approval of the last meeting minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those? They have a motion to approve? Moved and by Adrian, seconded by Tim. Any other comments? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, approved. Legal notices have been published. Order of business will be as per the, um, agenda on the table. First item up is the continued re-subdivision, public hearing continuation for, um, as it's crossed, the, uh, Father Family Trust, as it's crossed. So who is going to speak tonight?
I'm all right.
Jim, come on up, man. We're doing fine, and you? Speak from there, and we'll be good.
Well, we had a couple of meetings, um, which I think turned out very promising. And moving forward with, uh, the surveyors can change the map. Some of the other documentation ready.
Aye. Aye.
We have an issue, legal issue.
Okay.
You want us to make the back December.
Okay.
Legal issue is the method that was being sniffed.
Okay. You're requesting to basically table the application until the first meeting in December? And during that time, you'll figure it out with staff what we're going to do with the project at that point. Okay. Staff, Ron?
Yeah, we did meet, I think, on two occasions with the engineer from APD. And, uh, recently he had a revised drawing, which I guess is going to be the subject of our new application to the, uh, uh, planning board and zoning board of the field. So we await to hear that, receive that, and we'll move forward once we get it.
In the meantime, we'll table until the first meeting in December.
All right, with, with that being stated, it would be tabled to December sixth. Uh, all information would have to be turned in on the current application. And it needs to be reviewed at the December sixth meeting by November fifteenth by noon.
You're okay with that?
Okay with that. It should be about a week.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Jim, anything?
I got nothing on.
Okay, public. Do we have any public here in the room to speak? Anybody online want to speak about this? Okay. Uh, the board's okay with tableing this to December sixth? Okay. Uh, we, we didn't have resolution. Did, did we have a resolution? Yeah, okay. We have a continuation resolution. We need to put the date. Date is the sixth of December. The November fifteenth at noon part? Both of those in there? John, if you would, and do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented with those dates?
Motion by the town.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Aaron, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Lucia, aye. Doug Dees, aye. Aaron Sweeney, aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearings continue till December sixth. You have until the fifteenth at noon to submit the documents needed or discuss and figure out what the heck you're gonna do. Okay? Thank you. Have a good day. Next item up, site plan, preliminary site plan for Christopher Assant. Um, for the east side of County Road twenty-eight, just south of Maxwell Road. Preliminary site plan to erect a two-story, single-family residence. Who's gonna speak? You wanna speak from there?
Uh, I can go up there.
Yeah, why don't you go up there? Make it easier. Okay. Is that who's online there?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay. So tell us what you're doing. Okay.
I purchased property a year and a half ago.
All right.
Kind of okay, between Maxwell and Fox Road.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I've done a little bit of work staring at the property since I've managed to build our, I've done a lot of, I've talked to the with a two-story recol garage, uh, maybe three hundred square foot house, full basement, um, and then some bonus air and air.
Okay. Cool. All right, Ron?
Yeah, I, I drafted a resolution, sent it out, um, with conditions of approval. It's a, uh, also a seeker resolution, approved law, type-two action. So we got two resolutions for consideration.
Okay, we have type-two and then a resolution with, did you get a chance to see the conditions of the resolution? They not?
Well, they were sent to mark, to Greenland survey.
Okay.
And they wanted to know how many copies to bring in. I said, don't bring any in until, until we figure out what the planning board's gonna do. So.
Okay.
So on this resolution, it is, a lot of these conditions are technical in nature, uh, just meeting our site design. Uh, talks about the signature block, talks about some verbiage that we want in the notes.
Uh, pretty minor.
Pretty, pretty minor. I do have a copy here if you would like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you can take that. And, uh, but yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, so this one being on a county road, that's, I believe, county approval for the driveway there, not mine.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to say.
All right, with that, uh, nobody here? I assume there's nobody online? I want to talk about this one? Okay, let's go to the board. Aaron?
I have none.
Adrian?
I don't have it.
Doug? Tim? Okay, so do I have, then what, the, what we're, the process we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna prove or review and approve the seeker resolution first. That's a state environmental quality review regulation, and it's required by law to type-two actions. So it basically says it's no big issue. And then we'll do the preliminary site plan approval with conditions. Again, as they said, they're basically administrative type things that, that your engineers will change and fix on the map. Bring it in for final, then in theory, the final will be pretty well done. That will be at the next board meeting on December sixth. The answer is probably not.
Nope, it all depends how quickly your engineer gets it turned around to us.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess in theory, if they get it quick enough till the fifteenth, they might be able to slip in there.
Yeah, so if they get, well, if they get all the corrections done and turned in, uh, we always tell them that when they turn in the corrections to the preliminary, they should be submitting the final with it. And as long as they do that, yeah.
Because the process is the preliminary comes in and we have to sign it. Then the final meets the board, then we have to sign it again. So the faster they get it in, the better. So if they get it in by the fifteenth at noon and everything's clean and half is happy, that's each half is happy, then we're good to go. If it's later than that, it'll be the next meeting in December. Okay? All right, so first one is, uh, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the seeker resolution, which is a type-two, and approve its, approve its adoption? Moved by Doug, seconded by.
Adrian.
Adrian, got in just a second before you did here. Okay, uh, with that, clerk, take a roll call vote.
Lucia, aye. Doug Dees, aye. Aaron Sweeney, aye. Adrian Bellis, aye.
Aye. Seeker's done. Next one up is the preliminary site plan with conditions. Take a quick look at the conditions. I don't, like I said, I didn't catch anything there that was what I would consider to be outstanding. They're pretty basic stuff. You know, change the title here, change the block here. Yeah, and the engineer's gonna change that stuff on the drawings anyway. Okay?
The engineer didn't identify any concerns or objections, I don't think.
He, he pretty much said, just how many copies do I need to make? So obviously, I think.
He seemed okay with it. So if you're okay, you're good to go with that?
Well, I've not known very few days.
I know, I have.
Seconds, but sure.
Okay. So do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the preliminary site plan with condition? Moved by Doug.
Seconded by Tim.
Seconded by Tim. Any other comments, questions? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia, aye. Doug Dees, aye. Aaron Sweeney, aye. Adrian Bellis, aye.
Aye. Okay, you're good to go. Make sure your engineer gets on the ball, gets that stuff in, the faster he gets it in, the faster you get on the agenda.
I'll crack the whip.
There you go. Crack the whip. You're paying him, you might as well crack the whip, right?
Yeah.
All right, man, thank you. Welcome to the town. Okay, next item up is other board actions. We have the Farmington Whitestone incentive zoning project. Hey, you are here tonight to tell us about what you're doing, and, um, then the, the process is you'll fill us in, we'll let staff make some comments. Staff has not had time to do a full review of it yet. And then over the next period of time, we'll review it in more, in more detail, as well as staff, with the goal of putting together a letter to the town board with our, um, suggestions, recommendations, and comments.
We're only gonna get a mere approval tonight, not final.
Yeah, you didn't get any approval tonight.
Yeah, no. Uh, we're aware. Um, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, my name is Jess Sudol, City Councilor, Pastor, Apposice.
Perfect.
Here this evening on behalf of Whitestone Development, Mr. Justin Morando is here with us this evening representing Whitestone, and also Betsy Brog with Woods Obia Council Board of the applicant. So the project we're gonna speak a little bit about tonight is approximately sixty-five acres on the southeast side of the intersection of three thirty-two and forty-one, which our members of the board and community reports know the parcel well. It, uh, it sat dormant and vacant for quite some time. Um, almost twenty years ago, it was the subject of a rezoning advert to allow a large water complex, or water park complex, that ultimately, um, never moved on. As an interesting note, the night that that project appeared before this board, was the first night I ever went to a board meeting for a sign application, and I got stuck for three and a half hours behind that project.
Oh, wait.
Like, are all meetings gonna be?
Like, we could help out.
All meetings gonna be like this? So you're gonna make three and a half hours tonight? No, I'm gonna explain to them that. Um, so when, um, Whitestone brought us this project, when they were considering it for development, and as to what they thought made the most sense to do, there was a couple of different things that we started to look at, as we do with any project when we're contemplating what makes the most sense. The first thing we do is we go to the zoning and see what the, where the allowed uses and where the setbacks and density and things like that. Well, in this particular case, the site has a PUD zoning designation, which is very specific to that old water park project. So very quickly determined, well, the PUD's not really making a whole lot of sense, we're not proposing a water park. Um, so let's look at what other options we have and what other guiding, um, documents should we be looking at to figure out what is the best use for the site? Next thing we did is we started to look at what are the adjacent land uses. Certainly, we have three thirty-two, which is essentially a commercial corridor. We have four, four, or we have forty-one, which has a lot of light industrial, um, type uses. Or here on Quaintenshire, you have a multifamily project. Um, and down here to the south, we have, um, single-family development. So that was one of the things that we started to consider. Next thing we looked at was the town's comprehensive plan. You know, knowing full well that we're gonna be requesting some kind of rezone, you know, the comprehensive plan is essentially the guiding document for any rezoning request. Another thing that the comprehensive plan talks about is providing diverse housing. That's one thing that we considered. It also talks about not just having commercial neighborhood, small-scale uses, um, along with the three thirty-two corridor, but also doing them in such a manner where they don't all have the individual curb cuts. So you have a whole lithium curb cut going in at thirty, three thirty-two, which is potentially a dangerous situation with three thirty-two being a major arterial. Um, so much so that it goes so far as to say, the zip that relates to, you know, this piece and other blanket, uh, some kind of dedicated road should be built through the parcel on the backside of it, so that those uses could be fed off the non-arterial and deflector street if you would, um, dedicated type road. So from there, we essentially formulate our plan, and we start to propose these smaller-scale commercial-type uses along the frontage. Um, you know, the thought there is you could have, you know, potentially, um, you know, a medical office. You could have a, you know, a small restaurant potentially along the, you know, hospitality lines. And potentially a hotel, which are the things that we're contemplating now, which we think would all be, you know, very successful, given the geography of the parcel, um, where it's located, kind of this gateway to the Vanderlakes, and also with its adjacency to the right way. Does that really make sense for the first, um, four or five hundred feet here along the frontage? You know, going commercial much further back than that starts to not make a whole lot of sense, because it doesn't have the visibility from three thirty-two. Then looking along, um, forty-one, we wanted to propose something that was in scale and nature, but what was there now? Whitestone has a very good relationship with a, um, planning-controlled self-storage facility. So these aren't, you know, there are some of the single-story, you know, typical pre-manufactured people buildings, but you know, that was only a few of those in the back. But it could be a, a planning-controlled building that is actually, technically very pleasing, um, you know, it looks like a nice commercial building, not like a self-storage facility. So that's what we're proposing along forty-one. And then we are left with about forty acres in the back, trying to figure out what makes the most sense for that. That's where we look at things like the county, study, starting to further investigate diversity of housing, um, you know, that's talked about in the content. Certainly, we're well aware of what's going on over here at the highway corners across the street. Some of the other multifamily projects have been developed over the years up closer to, uh, thruway. Um, but in this case, though, strongly that we can successfully do, you know, multifamily housing project in the balance here, because that would provide what we felt was a good transition from, you know, the commercial and kind of light industrial type uses, as it got to the existing multifamily housing or some of the single families that house the south, excuse me. We also looked at, um, what would an appropriate scale of housing be? And we started early on with a, actually, a denser project, now three hundred units, which is what we're currently thinking about. Towns, it feels like a lot, and it is, but it's also a big parcel of land. Um, so the town's multifamily is only quoted, this is not so, nor are we asking that, but just using that as a reference allows us to eight units breaker. Um, you know, when you do the eight units breaker, you're talking about over three hundred fifty units. We decided to scale that back to, um, closer to six units breaker, um, six and king. By doing a less dense project, that allows us to do a few things, provide significant buffering to the single-family homes to the south, which will ensure, you know, they'll be concerned about what's going on in this parcel, especially since nothing has happened there for quite some time. And also give us an opportunity for buffering to the east, to the existing apartments, and the ability to do a lot of dream spaces, including a pretty substantial ability to dream in this area project, and provide a lot of amenities for the residents themselves and kind of make this a walkable community. And that case, it's pretty important, um, I just talked about my next item here, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about small-scale commercial uses, added prescribed in the top plan, a, you know, self-storage type facility, and also this, um, residential component. There's no zoning district that allows all those things, of course, right? And we didn't want to come before the town board and hold this board as well and say, we want to be on this internal business and this industrial, this MMR, you know, that starts to get very difficult to manage and not totally productive. Um, but the town does have the option of doing the incentive zoning route. And the benefit to the applicant with incentive zoning route is, you know, we avoid a lot of the, um, you know, bureaucracy of the industry of rezoning, I think, along with that. Greenlighted for us, and certainly the town is able to receive some incentives or benefits to the community that might not otherwise be proposed or provided as part of the project. Um, so just going through what some of those things are at a high level, it's very much, um, pedestrian and multimodal access focus. Those are kind of the main things that are incentive, are incentives that we're, um, that we're, that we're, that we're offering. Really, I can do it. One of them is the extensive public sidewalk, sidewalk network. That starts all the way up here to the northern part of our site, and actually extends well past our site, all the way to the south. I don't expect everybody to see that, but those all the way down here at Farm Brook, that, that yellow line here. Um, again, there are additionally, there's public sidewalks that will come all through this pro, through our project. That'll be open to the public and come over here and tie into Quaintenshire Boulevard. This really starts to bring this whole area and tie it all together. The town has a very attractive existing amenity, if you will, in the Auburn Trail, that's right on the other side of the road. So by riding this sensitive sidewalk network and then tying in all the frontage on three thirty-two, we then would put in a signalized intersection, which is actually also talked about in the comprehensive plan and other planning documents, getting a signal there. Um, helps slow down traffic and also helps the access. Also helps us to put in a pedestrian crosswalks, now get, you know, everybody, not just us, but a lot of the residents, visiting by the east side of three thirty-two, across the road, city visiting network, that's kind of enhanced by pathway corners, and ultimately over to the Auburn Trail, then you can go all the way up into Murrell County if you, um, really want to. But that, you know, the signal light, the crossing, the sidewalks are all large parts, or the makeup is nearly part of the amenities that we're proposing. Um, the other part of that is the dedicated infrastructure and providing the dedicated road network that is, um, prescribed in the comprehensive plan. Certainly dedicated roads, um, with their sidewalks and gutters and the width and everything, are much more expensive than private roads are typically. And these roads are, you know, kind of like we said, we just say, hey, well, we're gonna build those, we're gonna build those roads anyway. Well, if you look at these roads, they're not really tied to the project. Do they serve the project? Yes, of course they do. But they're pretty free and clear of too many connection points, or they don't have the building right off of them. They service the commercial buildings over here on three thirty-two, and then they tie in Quaintenshire, forty-one, and then three thirty-two altogether. And one of the things when we came before PRC a couple of months ago, a few suggestions were made to us on the plan, and one of them was, we previously did have some apartments, and this road was private, and one of those east-west. And what we did was we said, I'm gonna make that dedicated, but then that ties in Quaintenshire, which is only, actually has a dead end in itself, if you talk to any one of the highways you've dealt with, I don't care anyone, but no one really loves dead ends, um, especially when you're climbing them. But we made that dedicated road, we took off all of our driveway points, made those all internal. Um, we thought that was a pretty big change. A couple of the other things that we did, I'm making more than detail, site plan related stuff, I just wanted to point out, because, you know, Mr. Chairman, you were at that meeting, as were several staff members. We incorporated a self-road and access defense to the property to the south. So that, you know, right now it's a pretty small, you know, automotive type use that inevitably gonna reach any result at some point. When it is, they'll have the ability to install access to our project, get access that signal light, not require their own curb cuts, so we're further, um, you know, advancing the goals of the exit management plan, really limiting that curb cuts and giving everyone access to a new dedicated road, then have a solar light. And then lastly, um, in terms of project changes, again, this is really a site plan type issue, but we added a substantial amount of off-street parking, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to add your suggestion. But we pretty much got four times more off-street parking, um, than we did in previous, previous versions. Um, recently, actually, when some of the projects that were built twelve, fifteen years ago, up closer to ninety, uh, serotope crossing, and those projects did not have much overflow parking, and there was people parked on the side of the road everywhere.
Absolutely.
And I was, it was like this opinion, oh, now I totally understand exactly why you said that. Um, so we made that change as well. In terms of schedule, as you, as you outlined, kind of where we are in the process, very early on, um, town board asked the board committee this kind of recommendation or finding, opinion, and we go back to the town board, eventually for a public hearing through the rezoning process. And then hopefully back before this board start talking about, you know, some kind of overall site plan, that's a, that's a little bit down the road. Um, one thing I do want to speak to in terms of schedule is, this would of course be a base project. I think it'd be very easy for anyone, if I was a resident, I would say this. You know, and say, wait, we're doing this big residential project right over here across the street, now we're gonna do this on the other side? But things before you to know, you know, we certainly recognize that the process, rezoning, site plan, all the municipal approvals, you know, usually takes, you know, around a year, and then from then, construction takes, you know, a couple of years. So by the time we would really be finishing any of the product or asking for certificates of occupancy, you know, it's probably at a minimum of three years from now. Um, and certainly, a lot of the projects that have been recently able to stabilize and built full, and we certainly think that that the manual will be at that point. So in summary, that's kind of, um, what we came up with again. Really just trying to use that comprehensive plan as a guiding document and design our projects, such that it implies with those objectives. Um, given that development under the current PUD isn't suitable for us or anyone else, unless you mind if I?
It doesn't work.
Oh.
Unless you're gonna build a water.
Yeah, exactly. No, maybe we're doing that.
That, that was a pretty cool project in const, obviously didn't work, but, oh.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, what we'll do is turn over to staff, then we'll have some comments, and we'll go with that. Ron?
Yeah, nor, normally the process, uh, is staff will prepare a draft report for the planning board's consideration. Town board would like to have that for their second meeting in November, which I believe is twenty-eighth. Um, so that means gotta do it, get it out to you, and by the fifteenth, have something for you to discuss.
Right.
Okay? Um, then the next step in the process is for the town board to say yea or nay and, and move one direction or the other. If they move forward, it goes to drafting a local law, which is pretty quick, short local law, which says rezon based on an overall site plan and subdivision plan, which, uh, you will be receiving one this month for hours in centers of, uh, zoning, as a matter of fact. So, uh, uh, that's the next step. It goes to the county, the county reviews it. Uh, public hearing comes back in probably December, January. Uh, and then the next step is to get into the D, the weeds and design the, the, the project. Um, there's only one thing I would like to add to, uh, Jess's presentation tonight, and that is just to remind the board that the state DOT's policy for three thirty-two has been and continues to be that signalized intersections on three thirty-two are only available where there's town or county roads intersecting. So private development, okay, driveways. Um, the state DOT is not interested in creating a slew of stoplights up and down the corridor. And as a result of that, uh, I've got them to agree to locations for future signalized intersections, of which this is one.
Town road.
And we are obligated to provide a town road. The town road has different standards than a driveway does. So I'm, while some may look at that and say, well, it's really not an amenity, it, it, it is from the standpoint of the state DOT. So, um, I'm looking forward to their participation and input on this. Um, I, I think that Jess has, uh, copied the comprehensive plan pretty well. I, I think that Jess has, uh, copied the comprehensive plan pretty well. So, uh, that's all I have.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so Steph hasn't had a time to really dive into this. Uh, the applicant is making a presentation tomorrow at our, uh, PRC, uh, to all staff. So then after that, we should be able to, uh, dive in and give our report to this board that you guys can hopefully at your next meeting, uh, add your comments to it and then get a recommendation back to town board. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, u- usually at the PRC meetings, we have state DOT representatives and county planning and DOT, DPW, uh, representatives as well. Provides an opportunity for more documentation for the town board, for the, for your board, for the county planning board, to have as far as the thoughts of all the various agencies involved. So. Uh, we try to give them as complete, uh, the package as we can because we know they like to return things as incomplete if they don't wanna deal with them.
Well, I will tell you that PRC to me is one of the best tools available. More often you attend it and get feedback. It's not just a one-shot thing. They'll find something else or they'll see something or you'll try something. It's just a great tool for you guys to really get some feedback. Because honestly, as boards, we all just, we take a lot of information from the staff. And you got the, the town board there and you, like I said, you got everybody there. So I highly encourage you to not only be at, or to attend the PRC, but be active with the PRC all the way through the process. Okay, so, uh, Tim.
Yeah, so you talked about a phase, phasing it. Were you planning on putting all the roads in, in the first phase or just one road?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, we haven't, uh, got that level of detail, but I will say this. You know, certainly the first stage would likely include a big chunk of the residential, the self-storage use and one or two of the commercial paths like up front. We would absolutely precipitate the need to install this road here and the light. Whether or not we install this road is just gonna depend on how the phasing shakes out. That's something we can talk about in more detail in the future.
All right, and saying, okay, let's start with Tim.
My questions probably are gonna come with site plan. Plus too detailed about buildings and, uh, houses or townhouses, whatever's gonna be built. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. It's kind of what you're working on.
Adrian.
Over with what you just said, um, some of the pads will be possibly built out. Maybe in the first phase, you, you have, maybe you're seeing stores and stuff, maybe commercial or you don't have anything.
The commercial pads, we have a lot of users, White Stone's a very large, um, developer and they have a lot of relationships with different commercial uses. We do have restaurants and different service oriented type groups that are interested. If we get the rezone, then we can compete at the next level with them. They're not gonna give us a letter of intent, so we're not even zoned. But the thought process is, you know, if we're able to sell these lots, we can generate the capital that's needed to put in all the amenities and infrastructure. So it's very likely that more and more will be included in the first phase, so that money that's generated instead would help generate and pave the infrastructure.
And then the sidewalk, the one with Farm Brook, I have concerns about them. Not concerned, I mean, it's great, but I just don't know how easy it's gonna be to get through the state police there in front of their building.
We'll just condemn them.
So I just feel like, I don't know how well that'll work. I mean, I'm a little concerned by the size of the, all the housing and stuff and everything else in that corner. More storage. Have a good road. So I guess I gotta look at this more for next information.
Aaron.
If you were given the go-ahead once you get through, uh, through the boards, what is your timeframe for this?
We would like to start construction probably about a year from now. And maybe the first, all hundred apartments, two pads and self-storage. We start all that a year from now. We hope to be complete with all of that. Two years later, we're probably talking, having that first phase would be a lot of, first phase would be sixty to seventy percent of project being done sometime in, you know, by the end of twenty twenty-six. And then the subsequent phases, commercial pads, you know, probably going on another two phases each lasting a year after that. So maybe fully built out by twenty-eight. If we have three personal users that show up today, they're all in first phase.
I guess, yeah, it'd be one phase if you sell all three of them babies.
And they're really interested. You know, we've got to make some projects elsewhere in Monroe County and beyond. But, you know, having three thirty-two is really, really attractive in the amount of traffic that's there. And then also putting in a light. So.
I just wanna remind you, Jess, in Monroe County, they talk about it for years. In Farmington, we do it.
Put that in the record, John. Anything else? You okay? All right.
Did he say a Whole Foods is coming to Farmington?
Okay, Adrian's got one more.
The other dedicated road that goes over to Quinshire. Are those driveways going out, those four driveways going out to both parts?
It's kind of small. I don't, I don't believe there's any driveways. Got rid of the driveways on that.
Personally, see that road, free of any driveways on there?
That was.
Oh, that's the first one. Yeah, get rid of that one.
You didn't say you wanted the current one.
That's why, at first I looked at a couple of times at home and I'm like, well, it looks like sidewalks. Because it looks like it was a big enough of these second, there's other lines out here. Then it looked like, you know.
We gave him that feedback earlier.
There is a good chance that wherever those lines are, we will be adding sidewalks, just so those people, those units can get onto that public sidewalk system though.
Right, but there's no driveway. There's not four, five driveways there.
That's correct. And I do have one more question.
Wait, Tim.
Have you thought about electric cars and charging stations?
Yes, we're putting charging stations on all our projects. And quite frankly, by the time we get to, you know, a year from now, we're talking about building permits and what the current code is at that time, you could bet that. That'll be a big part of it.
So the fact that I probably won't be at the PRC tomorrow, I'm gonna throw some things at you here. First off, let me encourage the board to take a good look at the comments that the staff presents to us, so that we can get this thing rolling and get, uh, get things moving. Okay, uh, let me qualify some of what I say by the fact that I spent twenty-three years in the United States Air Force and I lived in projects like this most of that time. I can tell you that there's a number of things that are gonna be an issue. First and foremost is storage. Will these have basements?
No, there'll be some under.
Which means everything will be stored in the garage at best. So there'll be no parking in the garages. So just make sure you have enough parking outside of those garages. You got a three-bedroom house, you can figure you're gonna have at least three cars. They're gonna all have to fit there between the house and the sidewalk. Cause you're not gonna park over top of the sidewalk, even though it'll be on private property, we probably won't care. But it's not safe, especially if somebody has handicap and is trying to get around. So you, the biggest issue, especially when you've got so much space in the middle, is maybe pushing it back a little bit and getting that spacing between the house and the sidewalks so that people can park, especially in the bigger units. Single-family unit, uh, maybe you're on one bedroom, maybe you're okay with parking for two. But those garages will very rarely be used because of storage. Driveway length, I say is key. Sidewalks, just remember that we're gonna require sidewalks no matter what, except for outside the project. So the incentive is all those sidewalks you're gonna build outside the project. Anything you're gonna be building inside the project is, in my opinion, not an incentive. It's nice, it's good to know about, but it's not an incentive. Uh, these are all gonna be leased?
Yes.
All be leased, okay. Off-street parking, like you said, is critical because you're gonna have, again, you're not gonna, the good thing is, you're not gonna have a huge issue because your people on your private roads can park in the road all year round. Now, it's not gonna be great for the people you hired to plow the roads, but at least Tim won't have a problem with plowing them, cause he's not plowing. And where he's gonna be plowing, they won't be parking anywhere. So that part of it is good. Yeah, storage units, I'm still iffy on that, but the real question is, is when you talk about that many storage units again, what are the current area fill rates, you know? Are they all full? And I think they are. If they are, that's one thing.
Yeah, we, uh, our White Stone's partner, you know, they worked on these. They did a very comprehensive market study and allowed all of those stats. They're trying to drive the design of the site.
Oh, and I understand it with no storage, they're gonna be moving, moving their stuff over to the storage units. So that's another big issue right there. Signalized intersection to me is key. I mean, having that town road is key to get that in there. Marketing is key to those front, uh, commercial lots. Because honestly, we've got a lot of commercial lots on three thirty-two and ninety-six, and I see very little advertising there. And I know you guys work behind the scenes and all, you've got your own way of doing things. But just putting signs out makes at least the citizens feel that it's being actively marketed. It's sometimes more about the perception than the reality of the whole thing, which is important in, in what we do. So overall, uh, we'll take a good look at it. I know that some members of the town board have said that they think it's too dense. I think you need to have some answers for that of, you know, we gotta have it because of this, this and this. And, uh, you, the fact that you've added the extra, uh, parking, that's important. And if you can show that you can get these people off the streets, it's gonna be that much more of a workable housing project. I know it's gonna be market rate, I think I remember from the conversations. So, um, you know, we're excited about that. A lot has been said forever. So we look forward to staff inputs and we'll take a, uh, good, strong look at the, what they have to say. And we'll put a good recommendation one way or the other to the board and give them our comments. Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, we have two letters of release, a letter to credit, releases, uh, for Hathaway Corner Space two A and two B. We're all good with both of those. Signs sealed, delivered, everybody's happy. I have a motion to block these two and approve the resolutions as presented. Moved by Doug, second by Eric. Eric, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please. Aye. All right. Good stuff. I hate that you guys have to hear that. You used to live in these kind of things all the time, but I tell you, I'm done. Director of Development, open this question.
Okay, I got a, a list here, uh, of things. First of all, last Tuesday, Peter went to the county all-hazard mitigation planning job to talk about the status of the current plans and what we've had for Farmington. Uh, we had two projects. Uh, one was the inter-ministerial drainage study of the eight municipalities in Ontario County and one in Wayne County, which has been downsized now by the county planning department to three. Hopefully they'll get that funded, but the prospects of that are, I don't think, too hopeful. Then there was another project that we had identified, which was a backup generator for the town court facility. We got tired of waiting and, and went ahead and put a backup generator over there for the court. So that project comes off. At the meeting, as they were leaving, Tom Harvey gave a, a flyer for an open house coming up on the seventh of, uh, November, on the ninth of November, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow. That is a meeting where representatives from FEMA, the representatives from DEC, county planning, and the study consultants that have been working for the past two years with FEMA on doing updated maps for flood hazard areas in the town. Peter came back and gave this to Dan and I and said, take a look at this and see what effect it has on properties. So I did, and, uh, yesterday, uh, we sent out eighty-eight letters to property owners, giving them the good news that FEMA has deemed it necessary to include their properties in the, uh, un-mapped, or unzoned A areas. That's flood hazard areas without any base elevations. So those letters went out, letting them know of this upcoming meeting, and I expect tomorrow the phone will ring off the hook. The next thing that the county asked about was the hazard mitigation plan was to provide them a list of human, uh, hazards that have been, uh, experienced here in town over the years. These deal with such things as, uh, highway accidents, terrorism, um, events affecting agricultural lands, a variety of natural factors. Ashbore, infestations, things of this nature. So the various departments, highway, building, water and sewer, putting together their list of, of these events on that. The next thing that they want on this hazard mitigation plan is to identify new projects. And we have approached the fire department because I've learned that, uh, while we can't depend on FEMA to build new fire stations, they can enhance existing fire stations by doing, let's say, add-ons to this facility. So some of the things that I'm working with, um, with the president and the chief, John Whiteenburner, and now, uh, the chairpersons of the building committee, Don Giroux and others, are a list of potential projects to improve the efficiency and longevity of that facility for meeting, um, hazard conditions. Some of the things that we will try to identify, uh, is a decontamination room, a room for storage of turnout gear, to get it out of the truck phase where it's, uh, all that gear's, you know, being doused with fumes from the petroleum products. Building off of barricading off the, uh, communication center, making it a command center so that it's not open as it is now. Looking at, uh, providing, uh, showers and things for decontamination of firefighters. Looking at, uh, the prospects of using this as a shelter or, um, long incidences where there might be weather-related or power outages. Things of this nature where people in need in the community can come and, and. Things of this nature where people in need in the community can come and, and have safety and comfort. Warmth or whatever, whatever it may be. Just the top of the list, it's a broad list, we're not going to. Get into the weeds and say we want a room of this size or that size or all these other details. The purpose of this is to put it in your Hazard Mitigation Plan, which without it. A competitive application for federal funding is meaningless. Not going anywhere, so, uh, it's a prerequisite, it's something that, uh. The president jumped on right immediately and delegated and I'm working to. Put it together by next Tuesday for that project. Other things that, uh, are ongoing is, I'm just about wrapping up the updates to the onsite wastewater treatment. Regulations, um, we had a presentation here a couple, three meetings ago by. Soil and Water Conservation where they, uh, told us to take a look at something that another community had done. I took a look at it and we kept some things and we took other things out that didn't make sense. The sidewalk project is on target, like, the plans go to Albany this month. For their review and acceptance. Once they accept it. We prepare the formal bid documents, you know, that goes out to bid, award, and start construction next year. We don't know yet what we're going to get.
Yeah.
It's like a box of chocolate, um, we did an estimate for sidewalks at fifty-five dollars a foot. Which at the time, people thought was crazy, and, uh, it's kinda like your two percent mortgage rates on your homes. Uh, today's rates, instead of seventeen thousand square linear feet. We may have less than that time we get done.
What's the current rate?
Uh. It's all over the place, uh, as far as, I have no idea. I know.
Last one I did, they did a tear out and put it back in, so it was. Eighteen and a half. Square foot.
I know that, that, uh, Frank D. Felice, when he put the sidewalk in over there on Commercial Drive. He had a premium to get concrete from Batavia. Come in and pour that, um. But anyhow, uh, other things that are coming up. It's the time of year where I have to prepare a draft report for you to give to the town ops. On the comprehensive plans, the status report on all the projects, the, um. Open Space Index. I believe Kim is going to be coming on the fifteenth to. And to give you a presentation on what they have been doing, um, on updating that plan. Again, just a reminder that they got rained out last Saturday, so this Saturday is adopt the highway. Many hands make light work, so. The, uh, Farming, the Market. Farming and Market Center, there's no update, uh, I talked to Mike and. He's not hearing anything from Ange, so we'll see where this is all gonna go, um. And then they, it was one other thing, but I, I'll let Dan talk for a half hour and I'll, I'll remember it.
Thank you, Ron. Dan?
Alright.
Half hour is on.
Perfect, um, so, next meeting, we don't actually have any applications to discuss. You will have, obviously, the Whitestone and Sound Zoning project that was presented tonight, uh, with staff comments back to you. Uh, as Ron just mentioned, the comprehensive plan review update draft. Report for review that has to go to the town operations. Uh, we also are gonna review your twenty twenty-four planning boards, middle dates, and board meeting dates. We'll have that draft to you as well, and then the last thing was, uh, Kim, uh, talking about the Open Spaces Index update. Uh, so a lot of administration stuff at your next meeting, uh, but. Be advised that when we get into December and January, you got some large projects in front of you. If we do know that the power incentive zoning that Ron talked about, uh, their site plan and subdivision will be coming in front of you. Uh, we know that the solar project over on Commercial, thank you, uh, will also be in December. And it's possible that Farm Brook will be back in front of you in January, February, in fact, so. Of those three projects, those are all gonna take up a considerable amount of time. And that's not even including all these, the small ones in between, so, uh. And also, I was talking with the chairman, uh, we had a look at your, uh, first meeting in January for your, uh. Organizational meeting, so.
Can, if, gotta have other things.
So we're gonna try to squeeze that in there too, so.
If we can.
Uh, en- enjoy it when it's, you've had some off, because it's, it's gonna be busy here.
Uh, not much to report, uh, we're just winding down from the fall, starting up the winter, uh.
Better get ready.
Yeah, well, we went out swabbed a few bridges this morning that were very icy, um, yeah.
By the way, be real careful when we go out there tonight, I know it went pretty far, it makes us down to.
Uh, things were pretty much drying out, so hopefully it's dry, yeah, but it's cold out there, be careful, reminder. Yeah, so, uh, today's November first, so there's no parking on the roads from now until April first.
Good theory.
Got some snow today, loved it.
Yeah, I, it's like, so, you know, like, like I said. We've had some off days, um, you know, in the last few months, but it's gonna pick up. And it's gonna pick up pretty quick. These big projects, you gotta keep a good eye on them, make sure they're right, they're coming. You know, incentive zoning, so they come with some requirements from the town board. But, uh, they're gonna be there. This one here, the one we just saw tonight, I'm concerned, I don't, the town board. At least one or two of them are very concerned with the density, uh, in my opinion, so that's, you know, something we need to look at. Three hundred, all eight families. You can't afford to go into a house now, yeah, especially now, they can't afford to. No, not, not a six percent, and a three hundred thousand dollar home, which you gotta pay. Even those, or more, Ryan homes are more than that.
Yeah, the project almost done over there for Ryan home, I see they say there's only four lots left.
There's even less than that. Last I knew, there was two lots left.
Auburn Motors?
Yeah, that's done.
And I've heard that all the ones that, um.
Hathaway?
Hathaway. All the ones at Hathaway, they're, they're rented before they're even built, or sold before they're built, every one of them.
Yeah, the, the townhomes are all right, and they have a waiting list, just, uh, like the apartments are being built right now, they have a waiting list. People that can move into those apartments.
It's just like, he was saying, when they build these, three hundred, where they gonna store the gear? They're gonna store them in a storage unit, that they gotta have a place to store them, you guys, everybody else.
I get it, but, you know, you also gotta remember, always locks the way they're gonna stand, even if he has. You know, you got down here, he's got room to stand, so everybody's standing, standing in their room. Then you put another one up over there.
Convenience with these three hundred homes, they, compared to where they are.
Well, you're, you're right about that off-site parking.
You see?
My mother lives down in Saratoga Crossing, and of course, she doesn't have a lot of stuff, so her car's in there, but I go down there and see her all the time. And every garage is packed full.
Yeah.
And they, you're, you're right, three, four, five cars.
Kick for a ride. They got basement, it's the same thing, cars are outside, most of them anyway.
Will they really get, will they, the sidewalk one in front of the station, they're not jumping.
No, we already, we already got it, all worked out.
One of the things that I did to help with this current grant that we got. Was to get a letter of endorsement from the major at Troop E. Stating how important sidewalks were to the community.
Yeah, no, I, we'll be able to get ready.
It sounds like one of those things, like, oh, we're gonna put them there, but, you know, state or whoever has permission, blah, 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 or anything, it will just never happen. I know this is probably a regular, somehow going on the same trooper's barriers, I just felt like it would even be a whole up in, this has never happened, so.
They, they weren't gonna put them in, to meet our account, but. So if somebody else comes through and puts them in, they don't have a problem.
We, that's, that is good, I mean, I'm, uh, you mentioned it, like.
The only shot, we had two shots at sidewalks over there. One was with the engineer in Buffalo, who was doing the project. Trying to get them to include sidewalks as part of their project, and the state said, no, we don't need to do that, we're exempt from local regulations. Okay. That failed, not with Assemblyman Brian Cole. Who wanted to know what he could do to help Farmington. I told him, I said, put sidewalks across from the state police barracks. He kinda like looked at me as, uh, what the hell are you talking about? Okay, so, that pissed me off, and I figured out a solution to get funding and we got it.
That, that's part of the TAP grant.
That's right.
But.
No, not this, not this TAP grant.
Oh, this, not this?
No.
This one?
The one that we're doing now doesn't go across the front of the state police.
Oh, okay. That's good, for these guys to use that for incentive. That's why I made the comment of, uh.
Sidewalks, you have, if it kind of like you have all that, like, we have that in mind, you wouldn't, you know, that's an incentive.
Yeah, where it's outside the project, it's an incentive. If it's in the project, it's not an incentive.
It's an amenity.
Or amenity, yeah. So, it's just like, infrastructure inside the project, it's like, that's required, come on.
I get it, and same with the town, we don't need to pay any town roads right now, either, they have traffic.
You have to have a traffic light.
Well, one of the things you gotta keep in mind, that the only thing that they have identified. In their letter, that they need any kind of variance to is the spacing, uh, of driveway access points along that town road. Nothing else. It's not like the millions of incentives that Farming and Market Center wants. Doesn't wanna pull the trigger to make it happen.
Alright. Alright, anybody got anything else?
Yeah, two times.
Go ahead.
Um. I don't recall any, like, probably, on ninety-six, next to, uh, uh, Basie's Plaza. He has a week.
GLM, right.
Has he made any contact with you guys since, since the battle?
Oh, I know that.
Well, they, they've done work out there, the topsoil pile has been reconfigured, so it can be maintained in mode. They have put a sign up upfront, advertising as requested. Uh, we're still working through some of the other details, but they are.
Today, moving the rocks around.
Well, they've been selling a lot of those rocks that Merigun equipment.
I don't know what it was, is that what you're doing? I don't know what you're doing, but he's telling something over there today.
Uh, we're, we're waiting on some more information, but there has been some discussion between staff and the advocate.
And then, I know you, you've been waiting for me to ask this, but, uh.
Uh-oh.
Farmington said, I see some, some piles of topsoil there. They gonna be able to do that this month?
Well, that's, that's a good question. Uh, the chamber is one that's in responsibility to do the landscaping there. Uh, highway dropped off, topsoil for the landscaper. And, uh, we're, we, the chamber has paid the bill already for it to be installed. We're just sort of waiting for it to be, uh, installed.
Gonna say, the golf tournament gave them enough money, they should be able to take.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all been in place, there was some problems between the chamber and the landscaper, they supposedly worked out the details. And I don't know what the hangup is, um, because like I said, highway delivered the dirt when they were asked to. And now the dirt has sat there and it's now growing grass on it, so, um.
Stabilize.
Stabilizing.
Uh, so, yeah, I don't have a good answer for you.
Those are important also, and those, uh, I did, uh, ask the question about Matty's, uh, power reports or whatever it is. Uh, they have got so many big parks outside, not just along the front road. All the way downside where the, uh, car wash is, all the way to the back.
Well, they are, there, there's a display area that this board approved.
Yeah.
Along Route ninety-six.
Yeah.
It does not allow them to go down the side of their building.
Correct.
So, uh. Nope, it's all on the front, and it's actually where they land banked parking.
Parking.
So if they ever, and there's a phrase in there, if the land bank parking along the front needed to be graded. That display area would be removed. Um, but yes, they're not supposed to be down there, I do have my staff working on it, we're. We're putting all the information together and then we are gonna reach out to the, uh, owners.
Yeah, it's just one of those things, it's not a huge thing, but it's those little things, if we drive around and we see, we just ask the question. See where it goes?
Anybody about stabilization, um, with the storage guys down here in Colette, always?
Always locked, or, uh, no, uh, they place.
Um, is that dirt always, dirt, it's been screened all summer, are those gonna be stabilized somehow, or are they moving them here?
Those are questions that we have on for the PRC tomorrow, I don't have an answer yet, but. Yep, those are the exact questions that you are gonna ask, because what looks like is left is the soils. So they need to just probably be trucked off the site, so. Yeah, uh, and actually, we're into winter stabilization at this point, so, uh, I'm hoping that they can remove it from the site and then just straw for the winter. And then, and the spring will get back on it, so.
They started planting the forest out there on Town Line Road in New Michigan.
Monarch Manor.
Oh.
They put all the trees on the berm. They're very tiny, but they're there.
You know, I saw that down forty-one there, where they flag lot goes back in there. They mounted up the, on both sides of the driveway, they put mounds about, what, three, four foot high?
Yeah.
And then planted trees on top of them.
Uh-huh.
Those trees, number one, aren't gonna last, number two, a good stiff wind's gonna blow their ass over. Because it's a narrow, narrow, three or four foot ride.
Yeah.
That'll never let. It's, you know those flag lots down there, just we into.
It's a residential house.
Forty-one, yeah. Well, both, both, either, they got, they built these three foot berms on each side of the driveway. And then planted trees on top of them, which theoretically looks okay now, unless you understand the concept of how things grow.
I wonder how it's gonna work with the snow.
I was thinking, where the hell is he gonna blow the snow?
Well.
Or, plow the snow, he gonna plow it into the road?
No, no, no.
Yeah, it, that's not gonna be good at all.
Yeah.
Not good, although, in theory, I guess, not that much snow will blow in there, concept, you know.
Shouldn't.
Alright, anybody got anything else?
They, um, yep, they're full force ahead, they, uh, gave us a date of middle of December, they would like to open. Uh, it's aggressive, so.
They like aggressive, these are working and not gonna sit back, right?
Uh, we'll, we'll see where that one pans out. They got, they still have a lot to do.
Alright, anything else? Posted adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, good to go.